Salamano subdivision located. This is Chipwell, Marin, North. And Megan Salamano would request a primary final subdivision approval associated with the subdivision of a 13.4 acre parcel into two lots located in an RDS3 single-family residential district under the code of Tom Webster.
Alaru with Manalaru Associates. This is a two lot subdivision. One lot is three and a half acres that the Salamanos want to build a home on. And lot two is the remaining 9.92 acres that is slated to be donated to the town. The current owner, John Naka, attorney John Naka is here and can speak to that. So are Megan and Meg and Meg Salamano. Lot one is, you know, all the utilities are there, sanitary, water. We're going to get bridge access along across tributary 0-99-1. We're proposing to provide a 10-foot wide utility and access easement to lot two. The slopes for a single-family driveway off that, off that, that strip of land that goes up to Chidwell. We meet all the criteria. There's nothing about that driveway that's unusual. It'd be a great site. The town lands owns to the north and to the east of this development. So that, that issue of the ownership changing to the town, I guess the conversation was that it would be without access. But it would appear to me that being adjacent to the remaining town lands, it would fit right in. At this point, I'd like to turn it over to John Naka and he can talk more about what his plans are and why he's, would like to turn this over to the town. And then we'll, we'll answer any questions you might have. It's a pretty simple project there, Sean.
My name is John Naka. I pretty much agree with everything that was just said previously. I think we need to be more specific on the easement. I'm not exactly sure if it's going to be 10 feet or 20 feet, but it needs to be for ingress and egress and utility purposes. I do plan on donating it to the town. I donate it the same day we need to, we would close, I'm close with the Salamanos. I think it's a practical matter because it fits in with towns that, or with lands that the town already owns, the utility easement would be of no benefit to the town. And I would propose, in addition to what's been said before, that simply as a condition of my beading the property over to the town, that the town renounces the utility easement and cancel that out. I think that dovetails in with what the Salamanos want to do, basically keep that as a, a single lot in the balance of the property being transferred over to the town. From a procedural point of view, I don't know how, when I've reached out to your town attorneys, I've never actually donated land to the town before, so I don't know if it's as simple as saying, here's the deed and transferring it to the town, or whether there's something in addition that needs to be done at the town level. But whatever needs to be done, I'm willing to do it, so.
What would be your easement going in? Is the driveway to the house now, that would, that be the easement you're referring to?
Correct, correct. Because it's the, the easement going in off of the, off of Chidwell is fairly narrow, I guess. I'm not exactly sure how wide it is. The parcel land was about 60 meters. One more.
This is a 60-foot wide driveway at one point. And the driveway that's coming off is at the north side of it, just because of raining. And so the easement, and we put in a 10-foot access and utility easement. But the town has, has, and we've got documentation that came in, there's three or four different other places where the town could access this parcel. So may, you know, in our mind, very simplistically, we don't know why they would want access over the Salamano's driveway.
Yeah, don't you, I don't know what the code calls for. Is there a minimum for a parcel of land, like 60 foot, has to be an easement to a parcel of land for future development, who's going to be, so.
Well, this was a stub road at one time, so that's why that was.
So it's probably 60 foot?
It was a 60-foot former right away.
Okay, so what you, what are you saying? You guys want to make it an easement going into the property at this point, but you're only saying 10 foot, right?
Well, the, the 60-foot has been conveyed. Now it's not a 60-foot right away anymore. It's a 60-foot ownership of which the north 10 feet of it would be the easement for access, town access, to cover that technicality.
Utility, so, well, it hasn't been conveyed yet. That's the proposal. So that 60 feet would actually be conveyed to the Salamanos.
Yeah.
And the town would have.
See, my question is legally, unless I'm wrong here, if you have a parcel of land, access to it through future development, you know, for acreage equity, it has to be 60 foot, doesn't it?
That's my theory.
I think that's where I recall yours going, a parcel so. What I'm trying to say is, if it's an easement now, you know, it has to be a 60-foot easement going into the parcel. I don't think you have 10 foot for just utilities. And let's say we're going to develop it. Let's say you're going to develop it and you got, well, you have 10 acres plus the three. Let's say you have the 10 acres that, 10 acres would be exponential homes. You'd have to have a driveway 15 foot each unit, where you'd have to ask, so you'd have to have a 60-foot right away going in.
Right. They, they, they now have, that 60 feet that's there now is owned by John and it's going to be transferred to the Salamanos. And then what we're doing is, inside that ownership on the north end of it, for that technicality, we're providing a 10-foot easement to the town for access and utilities. And it remains to be seen whether that's an absolute necessity or not, because they have several other areas where they have access to the town lands, which this, if this were dedicated to the town, it would be all.
Well, you understand what the goal, I mean, I know your goal, but to get to that point, I don't know what the legality is for the road, for the, for the access to the parcel. And I, I don't know if 10 foot meets the requirement, or if it has to be the 60 feet.
Why would the town abandon the utility? What would be the difference to the town to do that?
Well, the fact that we're giving you the 10, 10 acres away. I mean, if, 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 if you have land that, that the town owns that already joins this land, that I'm giving you, I'm just giving it to you. So you, I mean, obviously.
I get that part, but why would we abandon the utility?
Because, because presumably the Salamanos would want an easement on land that they own over and above, they own utility easements for their house.
Well, the Salamanos will have the ownership of the 60-foot strip, strip of land that goes out to Chidwell. So incumbent on that would be a 10-foot to the town for utility access, in the same place where they would have a driveway. So they own it now, there's no abandonment.
But there, there are currently pipes in the ground that's allocated.
On easements.
Existing easements.
Exist, all the pipes and everything that's there now, all the utilities have their own easement. They're covered by an easement at, at this point. We're not looking to abandon those easements.
As you said too, I don't, I don't, all the years I've been here, I don't recall, you know, running into this, so if you will, we can get it out. And I don't have an issue with what you're doing, and I don't know what the legal part of it is.
Our subdivision, excuse me, our subdivision plan shows all the existing easements that cover all the utilities. And you may not have a full-size print, but they're there. We had the abstract, we looked at it, everything's, all the easements, all the utilities are covered. That exists in that 60-foot strip.
So the existing easement is this kind of, high stick shape?
Yeah.
That's the existing easement.
Yeah, right.
And so that existing easement, that contains the water, the sewer?
Yes. Yes.
And that, and that easement benefits the entire parcel.
That easement, will that easement stay?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so that easement stays. So what is the temper of this easement to the town?
Oh, because if we.
I just don't see it on the drawing.
If we just, it's, it's, we have a drawing into the town that does, does have that. There is a, if we create lot two, it's a landlocked parcel.
There's no access. So the only benefit would be donated to the town, which I'm willing to do. If we can't do this, then we have, I have a problem transferring lot one, because by what I do, I make 10 acres of land worthless. I can't even get in there. What's, what's the benefit of the utility easement to land I can't even get into?
I'm wondering if you can run it through. It, it sounds like what you actually need to give to this parcel is access.
Yes, that's what we're proposing.
The existing utility easement, the maintenance, the access easement needs to be created.
Right.
How does that, is that breaking out, that access easement overlays the existing 60-foot right away?
And, and that's why I said.
And what's the, the idea behind that is that once the parcel is transferred, and the other parcel is transferred, territory to the town, that would dissolve.
The, the ingress and egress easement.
And the argument of saying, the reason for dissolving it is that now it's parcel that is owned by the town and it is adjacent to land that is owned by the town. So therefore it has access from the town ownership.
Exactly. And none of the other reasons that exist today are going to be abandoned, they're all going to remain. So we're just supplementing to cover the, the technicality of the, of the landlocked parcel with a 10-foot wide utility and access easement.
Right. Would that remain there?
If the town, if it, if it turned out that the town was amenable to this, no, it could be, that could be just abandoned, that easement, because the town has access to other points, three or four, actually.
Okay, then why would the town want to abandon?
What benefit is it to the town if you're all in? What, what do we get out of it?
Well, that's why we're, that's why we're getting down to half, 9.9 acres.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would think that the town would be happy to add another nine or 10 acres onto their, onto public lands that are owned by the town. You're not going to need it to get into my parcel, you have access at other points to get to this additional.
Okay, so where does the benefit come? I mean, we're all good people and we donate stuff and we all look for stuff. So where are you wanting to get out of this?
Me? I don't need anything from the town. I mean, I'm, I need, I need the access so that, so that I can get an appraisal, because I'm just going to write it off on my cash account.
Okay, go.
Last time I, I mentioned math, the town said they didn't care, which is mine, I do, but.
Okay, anybody, you guys get any comments on this?
This sounds like a legal review, so I don't know what.
Yeah, that's right. I don't, I don't know what the legality is of the entrance of this 60-foot. To me, but yeah, I support you, this is the way I'm speaking, territory to the town, that's for the town. Yeah.
Yeah, the thing is the determination.
Yeah.
And we know, we know the town wants the land.
So they want the land, they want access, any kind of access.
We can't do that.
All right, let's do this. We're, we're going in a circle. Why don't we, why don't we table this and request a table and get together with the town board, see if they're interested in, in taking the parcel first of all, and how they want to proceed with the easement.
Because we don't have authority to accept the dedication.
The town doesn't want the land.
The town has its time, the town's working on its time.
They'd be very well led, but we, we don't have, we don't have.
I think what we're looking for tonight is, is for the, the planning board to either recommend that this is a good idea, or no, it's not a good idea, to the town board, because they have the ownership of it.
So, well, let's kind of, let's kind of put the cart before the horse, because we, personally, I'm okay with what he's talking about doing, but I don't know what the legalities of it all are. And Derek has brought a good point, that it really is something that, to take dedication, we have to be the town board. So I think we should have them, consult with them before we do anything. I mean, we can't send them a letter saying, well, we're all okay with it, because we don't know what every, all the ramifications.
Yeah, I think he wanted us to run it by you guys first. I think that's a, to get flavor for, you know.
Has this on our, the town board been approached?
I don't know. Have you approached Charlie Janeski?
Have I? I have. I emailed Charlie Janeski and I've spoken with the supervisor, whose suggestion it was, he left me a message stating that we're going to put it before the planning board. I mean, they were, they were all for it, but they just decided to go through the planning board, which is why we're here.
Because town code, section 19226, says that after determination has been made that an easement or easements will be required, either for the purpose of ingress to or egress from the subdivision, or as incumbent of any of the improvement districts to be formed therein, the subdivision or property owner is different than the subdivision, shall submit to the town attorney for the planning board, that fulfills the event in a legal description of the property within said easement.
And we have done that.
You submitted the easement?
And description.
To Charlie?
Not to Charlie, no.
Okay, you submitted it to DBW. Yes?
No.
Who did you submit it to then? I think we, I think it went to Josh, I believe.
I don't believe that our office has seen it.
I didn't see it.
Why don't you do this? We can do this for starters. Again, this is a public hearing, so assuming we focus on the neighbors and, okay, so why don't we do this? Let's open it to neighbors. If you wish to comment on it, just keep it short. I'll, I'll also ask is, if you'd love, give us your name and address and explain your situation, so.
Sure.
Let's go for it.
You want me to just talk to the neighbors?
No, 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 go to the mic. Give us your name and address.
1498 Chipwells, which would be here, the access road they're talking about, and.
What's your name?
Rick Tadde, 1498 Chipwell Land. I would like them to talk a little bit about the creek, because that is a class five Steelhead trout, trout creek that has strict regulations. And at least the DEC and the Army Corps of Engineers are quite interested in what might be the impact of all the development that's got to go on that steep hill, you know, and what that could possibly do.
We'd better contact them.
No, but I would like to hear what they've told you. It isn't just that the bridge has to be strong enough to bear all the heavy equipment, and that they have to have the easement, but there cannot be any short-term or long-term erosion on that creek. It runs into Four Mile Creek, which as you know, is part of the trail system in Webster, and then goes right into Lake Ontario. So more power, more power to you if you can do it, but no damage to the creek, because they're just not going to let you do that.
We, we understand that.
Don't talk to the audience, let them finish and then move on.
But basically that's it. I mean, I think that's certainly our, my wife and I and several other neighbors, that is our biggest concern. And having been involved with the trail group for seven years, I know how much work they put into developing that Four Mile Creek preserve, that many of the citizens, and not only Webster citizens, but other people use it. Hundreds of people fish there, mostly by the way here. But this creek, Salt Creek runs right into Four Mile Creek, and it's very important. That's really the biggest concern.
Thank you, Mr. Tadde.
You're welcome.
Anyone else wish to speak?
I'm Catitario, 1498 Chipwell Lane, and I want to say to Megan that we would look forward to welcoming her to the Chipwell Lane neighborhood. It's growing with young families and it would be wonderful to have her join the, the community. However, as Rick was pointing out to you, this is, and it requires some sensitivity in the way that the creek is dealt with, it's a sensitive area. We moved here 15 years ago and since then, there have been three, four, maybe five other developers who have looked at the site and realizing not just the expense, but also the difficulty of the regulations by the DEC and the Army Corps of Engineer, and Monroe Company and a few other levels, they have added in their plans. The, so we welcome Megan to the neighborhood, but we just would like to see that all of the supervision that's required, that you have a safe, as well as a beautiful development, be watched over by the town of Webster. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I think, well, on those lights, I think the DEC would be heavily involved. That was one of the comments that came up here. Is there anyone else? Is there anyone else?
Hi, my name is Sue Herman. I live at 1506 Chipwell, which is just on the edge of this proposed three and a half acre lot. As previous speakers have mentioned, this is all a sensitive area because of the creek. Our back lot line from our home to the creek is like a wetland area. And just to the south of our property, the creek comes through Ryer Field Way, it comes underneath the roadway there, and it comes around and it makes a sharp turn right at our property, and then proceeds along to the north end, which is where this three and a half acre house lot is proposed. My concern is flooding. It is well-known that this is a flood plain area, and we get substantial flooding right now, because the water coming from the south rushes up so much, misses the curve, and floods out the whole back part behind our home, which is perfectly acceptable, because that's the way it was designed. But I have some pictures that I took of the last storm, the last few storm we had, and the large amount of water that collects there now. And it's, it's, it's a huge amount of water and it's really moving quite rapidly. My concern is that the home that's going to be built, I don't know what the elevation, how much they have to build up the property, how this is going to impact that flow that's now coming across by our backyard and into the other neighbors' backyards. So I've got a couple pictures if you want to look at. So where the water line starts, that is basically the end of our lot, so it's the, that's the flooding area that happens with the storm. Well, yeah. You can see that with the boat, actually, this part back there, the water is actually halfway up. The boat will exit, so you can see how deep that is. Now, this picture here, this is where I was saying the creek makes a turn and then goes back behind those trees. And so because it turns there, it misses that turn and it comes directly across, across this way here. And then it proceeds down to 1504, you know, in, in the Y. And so, you know, it's just a little bit of a concern of like, how much worse is this going to get if there's impact in the land as far as, you know?
Yeah, I'm wondering just if, you know, to get off of everything else here, but is there maybe some blockage in the creek in a certain area there?
Well, yes, that's exactly what we've been told. Some of the neighbors, some of the neighbors have contacted the, like you can see, and they're saying, you can't touch it, you can't do anything about clearing out blockages. My husband goes back and clears out things like that, when we, you know, we start to tow, you know, garbage and things like that, and starts removing any treatments or brush or anything the animals might do. Some of the neighbors, people can't do anything about it. So that's just a little bit of a concern.
Looks like there's a lot of little bridges over there.
I wouldn't be able to move it if I tried.
Yeah, all right. He'll need one. Well, see, that's, that's one of the problems, like she was just saying. You get blockage in these creeks and this is happening in other areas in town where people have a stream going through and they build a bridge and it's not done to any standard. Alls you need is a couple pieces of brush to start piling up in front of it, and all of a sudden your creek is overflowing and.
Well, just where the proposed lot is though, is like, what kind of an impact is that lot and what, what is the elevation? How much, I mean, it has to bring in from the house.
Yeah, well, I'm sure they gave, I'm sure they have to be something they would regulate, you know, as far as the elevation.
Right.
Yes, anyone else? Yes, sir. Oop, I didn't see you back from home or something.
I'm trying to be real quick. My name is Dave Boat. I live on Fallen Leaf Terrace, 1511 Fallen Leaf. We've been there ever since the beginning. We built the house there in 98. We had a little house, it was empty lot on either side of us. We bought that place for the land. And the creek is very important, it's a watershed, but that land is a lot more important than that. You hadn't talked about the old, the forest, there's an old growth forest in there. Those trees are 200, 300 years old. Once you cut them down, they're gone. You can't replace that. That land there is really, it's a nature preserve, it's a wildlife refuge. Everybody, I'm sure knows you've heard of deer in there, you've seen the fox. You know, last year I saw a turkey in there. Everybody see a couple turkeys on the side of the road. I saw a flock of turkeys in there, a count of them. There was 20 turkeys. I don't know anything about turkeys, but that's phenomenal. It's a wildlife refugee, wetlands, old growth forests. Mr. Ellon talks about donating some land to the town. I think that's phenomenal. I think that's great. We should jump on that, if you can get some land and protect it. Whatever you do with this development, please try to keep it as small as possible and protect that land back there.
Well, that's why he schedules the waters.
I understand, I understand. We're all trying to work together here. I think we need to try to protect that land, it's very special back there. And they're building a, you didn't talk about easement, you didn't talk about building a bridge. I mean, that's a, that's a big undertaking. And I would just try to keep this development as, as small as possible, protect that land back there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, that's okay, don't worry. My, I'm Megan, this is my husband Matt, so we're the, we're his buyers. I know, recognize familiar cases.
You're the governor, am I usually like...
Oh, I'm sorry. From being over in the development and meeting some of you, we, you know, understand and respect all of your concerns that you're bringing here tonight, and that's kind of why this project is taking, you know, the time that it's taking because we're working very closely, not only with our engineer, but also with the DEC in regards to the creek. As far as the creek goes, we are following all the DEC recommendations as to what the bridge would need to entail for our driveway to cross the creek without causing erosion or disruption to the creek and the water that is in there when it is wet. We have been monitoring with pictures as well after the storms, when we actually have pictures.
Megan, excuse me. You went a little bit closer to the microphone.
Is this funny?
There you go.
I'm sorry. We've been monitoring per the DEC recommendation. We've also been monitoring the creek with pictures after heavy rainfall, and we actually have multiple pictures over days after rainfall where the creek is actually dry, specifically at the point that we would be crossing. But again, we're following and working closely with the DEC regarding their protocols and their guidelines, what would entail us to cross with our driveway. And then I know it was mentioned about like the land and it being wildlife, which we, you know, we also respect, and that's why we're working very closely with the seller, John Nakka, to only disrupt, you know, as little land as possible with the hopes that he would be able to donate the majority of it to the town to keep as its nature and wildlife without disruption.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Excellent. I ask a question, I guess. You folks have been here this evening, you've heard everyone discussing this. The gentleman's owned the property for several years. He has paid taxes on this for several years, and he's at the point now where he's saying only a certain amount of it is developable. So let me ask the guys a question. If he were to say, "Forget it, I'm not gonna donate the land. A lot of it is wetland, and I can find two more flat spots in there to build three houses back there," what would you rather have? Actually, back in the nineties... Wait a minute. I, I know, but hold on. What would you prefer to have? What's proposed? Or three or four houses? Or there could be more, yeah. Anybody have any suggestions?
Yeah, as proposed would be.
I'm sorry?
As proposed.
Okay, thank you.
Versus two or three, or up to six, yes.
We're debating what goes first here, the cart or the horse, but we can send a letter to the town board. Would you folks be in favor of us sending a letter? I've never done this in all my years here. It's the first time this has ever happened like that. First, the first time I've been in this dilemma, I think. Would you be in agreement, and this board is sending a letter to the town board recommending they proceed forward with purchasing or accepting this parcel of land with just the one house added and working regarding the easements and stuff that they're proposing to the corporate?
You know, really, I'm not knowledgeable enough about developments to answer that question.
You don't have to be.
No, but I, I wanna say this. We moved there in 2006.
All right, we're not picking you up. If you wanna talk, you can go back up there, but...
All right.
Mike's got a...
The developer for this Chigwell Lane area, Woodford Green, is Tom Marchello, and he's built several tracts, and he lived there when we moved there. And I have talked to him. I've also talked to the zoning, person who was in charge of zoning at that time, 2007 this particular year. And, and we have correspondence too, because he wrote to my daughter about this whole issue. And he couldn't build there when he was building all these other houses, knowing the difficulties it was gonna take. Not just the hoops about the creek and everything, but he was saying the, the cost, and this was in 2006, he said the cost to get a proper bridge and culvert was, it was huge, and that was in 2006. And I, I just want, I mean, if they can do it, that's great, but I want them to be aware because they're gonna be spending a lot of money. Is this worth it for the one property or even two?
Rick, that's not our call. Stop, stop. That's not our call. That's their call. That's how they, that's how the system works. You can't say, "We don't want you to do this because the cost is prohibitive." No, that's their call. If they're gonna do it, they do it by the book. They're gonna do what's gonna be required by DEC, the town, the county, so on and so forth. And that's all we have to look at.
No, you know, I shouldn't, what I was simply trying to reiterate was the concerns that Marchello had in 2007.
Yeah, we're aware of all that, though.
That's all?
But, but there are, there are people, somebody might wanna come in there with a couple million dollars, wanna put a house right in Amelia, that thirteen acres of land.
Sure.
Building a bridge, I'll guarantee you, you'll figure a way of doing it. But my point of the whole thing is, would you rather just have the one house in there that we know is on the proposal right now, or the possibility of him saying, "Well, the town doesn't want the property, I'm gonna build three houses?" I think I got your answer, but the one house is probably more of a battle because of all the what.
First of all, we, we all did visits from the various wildlife that's there, and that's part of the charm of living there, so I would say one house would be fine.
I actually think the question is beside the point. The point that everybody here is making is that the proper procedures have to be followed through the proper agencies, and I, my question is, how will that be monitored?
See, we understand that part, but that's secondary to the primary. Primary thing is, is the town willing to take this land to even begin the process? Once the process begins, that's when they step in and have to have everybody involved, DEC and so forth.
So should your letter to the town be, "Are you willing to accept this donation?"
That's, that's my, that's my question. That's what I was asking.
Well, it sounded like...
This is a question I was just asking, what kind of...
Okay. So, so your question was, do we think it's a good idea for you to write to the town and see if they will accept the donation of this land? Yes.
Okay, that's, the gentleman said that.
I don't know what everybody else thinks, but yes.
I think we're all on the same page now.
Okay.
So let's, let's have that direction. So you guys okay with that?
Yep.
We'll send a letter to the town. This is where we were undecided. I mean, I was anyways. We'll, we'll draft a letter to the town board stating that after reviewing the process of the application and comments from the neighbors, it was very acceptable that the town, it would be very acceptable for the town to take dedication of this parcel of land to work with the applicants in regard to, in regard to the easement, okay? That okay, right?
The problem, yes, but the problem is, he's saying that he submitted easement to Josh, and Josh saying he doesn't have easement. I've never seen this proposed easement, so I don't know where the easement is, but I don't have it.
We'll check it tomorrow. Okay.
Well, wait, hold on. You're, you're going too fast. How can we approve something when I haven't even seen the easement yet?
No, we're not gonna approve it. We're just sending a letter to the town board, recommending that the applicant review it.
Okay, okay.
I'm getting scared of this.
Well, I'm just saying, I don't want you to approve something I haven't even seen it.
No, no, we're not gonna...
We're approving something, it's like, that's like buying a jungle, you have to get eaten.
No, we're not gonna... Yes, sir. Sure, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Bob Shaw. I live at 1494 Chigwell. My, it's more a question, I guess, is if this were ultimately approved and donated that land to the town, and I understand incredibly that there would only be one house there, or is there any chance that it can turn into two?
No.
And three?
No.
And four?
No, no, that's exactly the point. You're looking at me. My, my involvement, once I sell the lot to the, to the buyers and I donate the land to the town, I'm out. Right? So it would be, should be one lot with one house, that's why I thought... Just didn't have to, we really didn't even hear you, but I'm like... I'm sorry. But anyway, the answer to your question is, you know, once the town has it, it becomes parkland, and that parkland is there for...
It would be up to the town, what they decide, if they wanted to do with the land.
And actually, that picks a, that, the town, or even the, if the town wanted to sell it, that'd get off the subject, but there's pieces of land in the years past where the town wanted to sell a piece, they have to go to, go to the state and everything else, you know, mire a little piece, so it doesn't happen.
We have submitted to the DEC and all that, and bridge details and all that's counted to the DEC, and we're waiting for them to respond.
Yeah.
So we're, it's a process that's started.
Yep.
But this is the first step.
Okay, is the board's in agreement with doing that?
Yeah, yeah. I heard two comments tonight, though, that I think we need to follow up on your part. I heard two comments tonight, that I think we need to follow up on your part. Looking at the plans, the grading plans, sheet three, I see some cut and I see some fill to level up, develop the house. One thing's not clear on the plan is the actual extent of the amount of disturbance of trees we'll take on.
We know what that is.
Some kind of sideline showing that how we got...
We're disturbing three thousand four hundred eighteen square feet. Then includes the, the lawn on the west side of the creek.
So you're, you're less than acre.
Oh, less than an acre. And certainly not less than an acre of the, of the wooded area. Because again, I'm a graduate forester, I like trees.
And the other comment I've heard, a statement made about the flood plain, and I don't see any indication I hear what of that, where the flood, maybe on this site.
Yeah, the site, the plan does indicate, the plan does indicate that it's not within a designated flood plain.
This is a flood plain.
I pay my flood plain? No, it's not on a flood plain map, it's an designated flood plain. I think you'll find that on, on sheet three, that note. Yeah, and the house that we're proposing is fifteen feet above the creek, bank of the creek, so I think we're, we're high enough.
So the house itself is essentially for all intents and purposes, the streams around it, what is an island, is what it's...
It's an island, yeah.
And you just need, there is cut, you see on the entrance driveway, and also cut the creek driveway to block the house by presumably reasonable grade or access to the town. The lower, the lowest area by driveway is going to be the problem. So even though this thing is not in the flood plain, has some DEC Corps of Engineers installed for what's necessary for a littoral thing?
Oh, yeah. No question.
Will we all like to count up to it?
We will. Looking at the sheet three, I see a better understanding of why you shaped the lot the way you did, kind of followed the contours and things back up. All right, okay, then that's what we'll do at this point. We'll, we'll address a letter to the town board. You guys agree with that?
Question, question on you?
One more question.
I was asking two, though, is that, have you gone out and done a formal wetland donation reserve?
We have, I've looked at it to say, no, there isn't any in that area except for that little small van where the creek is.
Sure. With what the streams are...
I know what the species are.
Looking at the streams and so forth, it really seems that that should be... Is it gonna wind up being needed for Corps of Engineers or maybe something like, projects?
And we're waiting for them to respond to the text.
Just demonstrating that the wetlands and the trees and all the impact of that may improve the area of disturbance as well, the state of the land. And I figured that the house can be...
Exactly.
Okay, we'll send... Yes, sir. Yeah, I'm sorry, I moved over there. Yes, ma'am.
Can we request that in your letter to the town... In your letter to the town recommending that we accept the donation from Mr. Nakka, would you ask that they accept it as a park district instead of as open space? Is that possible? The difference being, the two being that if it's accepted as a park district, it will remain as a district. If it's accepted as open space, then the town can sell it at a later date?
No, they can't sell it, yeah.
Okay, that's not, not my information, but...
No, once you're done, I'll, I'll be guessing, so...
The thing is that that town board received the parcel of open space, but informed the park district. So then they would reach out to the residents in that district because they may be seeing the cost associated with the park district. I've never seen it, I don't presume you know everything about the town board, but I've never seen it where it's as dedicated as a park district.
My belief is they would keep it continuous with what the rest of the world, and there's a large piece there that connects to, they'll keep it the same as that, I'm sure.
I just don't want to come back here in ten years and ask you to do this all over again.
No, I don't think, I don't think I would do that, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
You're not gonna give...
No, no, we're not gonna give any approval, but alls we're gonna do is, I'm just for the recognition we got, I'll make the motion that we, that the board has agreed to send a letter to the town board for their review of recognition of this.
Mr. Tashawny?
Aye.
Mr. Arena?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Heston?
Aye.
That's done. Now, again, this wasn't public hearing. Shouldn't we close the public hearing?
No, 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 we should leave it that secret.
I should leave it open.
Yeah, we'll leave it open. And my only other suggestion would be two-fold. One, it turned this to a specific date, and you need to submit your easement so that we can review it, so when we come back, whatever date you finish to let, we can move along.
Well, they'll have to get sent up to the town board first, and it's gonna be pretty hard to pick a date.
Well, just pick a scheduling, you can bring a town board, whatever you wanna do. But these, we need to agree to a specific date, and he's not hanging, they're not hanging, everybody knows what's going on.
Okay, so what, what Josh got to tell you?
I don't think we can bring it back to the next meeting.
No, no, it's, it's put to the town board, they've got to set theirs.
Would the planning board vote? I'm just trying to think of the specifics of the dedication aspect of it. The planning board actually needs to be submitted first.
Correct.
And the dedication, I don't know.
Correct.
In the past, in the past, when this platform was submitted, submitted, the land could be heated over, would be submitted as a separate thing from the house, or they would just go in and you would have a look at the D description to make sure everything's copacetic. And then, I don't know what happened after that because I'm just a woman on the phone and call the buyer people to approve, because we don't have authority as a board to accept dedication. We can recommend, yes, but that's it. We're legislative adjunct of the town board, whatever power we have, fulfilling whatever they've given to us, the town of Webster. We don't make...
We would see it as in like for a preliminary filing, you could give it a, you know, all the preliminary, give it a filing, but then it'd be subject to, and then pass that to the actual transmission of the property to the town board.
Right. And I can't see why the town board would not want it, nine, four, nine acres? I can't fathom any of that. But then again, I don't know everything about the town board, I don't know...
We just can't make the call.
We can't make that call. But at least submit it, and then I can run it up to Charlie, and we can talk about it.
Okay.
And then he can talk to whoever has P S B companies to filter it back down to me before the next meeting, so since you're gonna do a specific date, what do you know?
Yeah, that's, that's Josh was checking.
Yeah, so is a public hearing required when the town board goes to decide on accepting the dedication or not? Because then that would have some additional time to...
Just assume, assume you have...
It probably would.
I, I guessed that it was yes also because that would be the same thing as the town. They have to set a meeting up for the acceptance of it, giving a special use for a type case to add.
And more ability for citizens to comment with the board. No one's going to find fault if we give more out than you.
The first meeting in October will be the fifth. And that's still might be pretty tight for the number of meetings the town board.
Why not go to the nineteenth? Does it control the...
Well, yeah, I'll be on the contract. I don't know if my business is required or not.
No, not really.
Thank you very much.
I just wanted to avoid ten acres.
Just give it away, that's all.
Where do we send the thank you notes to? All right, there we go.
Have you moved the, stop the lawn, I'm trying to go to the spring?
I'm sorry?
Enough building for the spring?
Um, we'd like to break ground before snowfall. So we're really here to get approval for the building law.
I think, yeah, the donation is tied between the town and Mr. Nakka.
Well, yes and no. I mean, I'm not going to, I'm not going to sell the lot if I'm not going to be able to donate the land. Because shot myself self in the book, now I've got ten acres of land that I don't have access to exactly. And I have a total mix total say. The only, the only normal for us is there's a process we have to do it. We'd like to say, yeah, you can be able to start in October, but you don't know how it all goes. Step by step and do what's we can.
This little project, to get on board on the...
So we sent a meeting in the nineteenth?
That's what I was thinking.
Okay, so motion to have the applicant return in October nineteenth? That kind of for the process for the...
Mr. Fishani?
Aye.
Mr. Posel?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
And Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Reed?
Aye.